And we'll give it just a couple of minutes to let everyone get in the room. All right, I am going to hit mute all. As a reminder, this is a hearing before the Boston Cannabis Board. Today is Wednesday, July 22. The business before the board today is the draft rules and regulations. While the public is welcome and we are very happy to see so many people attending today's hearing, as the public comment period on the rules and regulations is closed, we will not be accepting public testimony. Today's hearing is held pursuant to Governor Baker's executive order temporarily modifying the open meeting law due to the ongoing COVID-19 public health emergency. This is what allows us to meet virtually. Today's hearing is being reported and will be posted to the board's website. And with that, I will turn it over to Kathleen Joyce, the Chair of the Board.
Good afternoon, and thank you for joining us today. I'd like to introduce my fellow commissioners that are here with us. We have Commissioner Lisa Holmes, Commissioner John Smith, and Commissioner Darlene Lambos. And I'd also like to note that we're joined today by Alejandra St. Ian, who has been appointed by Mayor Walsh to be the fifth Commissioner of the Boston Cannabis Board, but she's yet to be sworn in. And I would like to thank the industry experts, the applicants and the practitioners for your valued comments over the last few weeks on these rules and regulations of the board. The board has worked diligently to balance the need for a clear and predictable set of rules and regulations and to put them in place in order to provide guidance in a process for applicants for cannabis licenses while ensuring that we have a sufficient public comment period so that all interested parties have an opportunity to be heard. It's the intent of the board today to adopt these rules and regulations. I want to thank Councilor Janie and Edwards for their written comments and continued dialogue on these issues. They continue to raise the bar on what equity in this industry should look like throughout the city and in our neighborhoods. And I want to turn it over to Secretary Leslie Delaney Hawkins to give an overview of the comments we received and the proposed changes to the draft rules and regulations.
Thank you, Chairwoman Joyce. The process by which these draft rules and regulations have been drafted, noticed and considered has been pursuant to the requirements of Massachusetts general law, which governs rulemaking. The public comment period on the draft rules and regulations began June 17th and was open until July 15. A public hearing was held on July 8. The notice on this process and the hearing was posted to the city clerk's website, the board's website, and also ran in the Boston Herald. In addition to the public testimony heard by the Boston Cannabis Board at its public hearing, we also received comments from 23 individuals or organizations totaling approximately 83 pages. The testimony and public comments addressed many aspects about the draft rules and regulations and the cannabis industry as a whole. The testimony and written comments received by the Boston Cannabis Board touched on a number of issues. All of these public comments have been posted to the board's website, as well as has the recording of the public hearing. Much of the testimony and comments received were substantive and have been incorporated into this revised document being considered by the board today. Some of the testimony and comments received were more policy-driven in nature and will not necessarily appropriate to incorporate into the regulatory framework. It is incredibly informative of the industry as a whole and the challenges facing the same, especially regarding equity. And it is instructive of many of the issues to be presented and discussed before the board at its public hearings regarding applications. I do want to note that the board and these draft regulations are bound by Massachusetts general law. Issues such as the categorization of different types of cannabis establishments, for example, a testing facility versus a dispensary. While these make logical sense, they're not within the legal realm of what the board's authority extends to. By not including these issues in the rules and regulations, the board is in no way dismissing the validity of such ideas. However, we are bound by the law. This overview of the public comments I'm going to provide in a minute is in no way exhaustive. It is simply meant to highlight broad topics and ideas that were received from multiple individuals. All comments have been reviewed in detail by each commissioner and the board staff. The board received multiple comments requesting that the board waive the requirement of a specific location in order to proceed with the process and site control as a barrier to entry. Multiple comments were received regarding the desire to see a concrete timeline for licensure at both the local and the state level. Comments were received regarding the desire to see diversity and equity in both the citing and operations of licensees. Comments were received regarding the definition of an equity applicant and how the same will be interpreted pursuant to the ordinance. Comments were received regarding the definition of the area of disproportionate impact and how the same will be interpreted pursuant to the ordinance. Comments were received requesting clarity on what constitutes a complete application before this board. Multiple comments were received on the school buffer zone, both those in favor of a citywide ordinance lessening the requirement and those opposed. Comments were received regarding whether ancillary facilities such as gymnasiums are included for purposes of the school buffer zone. Many comments were received regarding the half-mile buffer zone from an existing cannabis dispensary and the proposed process regarding the same. Comments were received regarding the proposed requirement that all direct and indirect beneficial interest holders be disclosed. Comments were received regarding the process for evaluation of applications and ensuring the same reflects the ordinance. Comments were received requesting clarity on the process for disciplinary action and the enforcement authorities regarding the same. Comments were received regarding the ability of the board to review and enforce representations made regarding all of the criteria in the ordinance. Comments were also received regarding separate standards and a separate process for cannabis establishments such as testing facilities that do not necessarily pose an impact to the quality of life on the surrounding area. Before I provide an overview on the specific substantive changes in the final draft rules and regulations that are before us today, I want to provide some context from a legal perspective on several points. On the requirement of a location to proceed with licensure by this board and the CCC. The CCC and Mass General Law requires in a butters hearing prior to moving forward with an application, and such a meeting cannot be held without a specific address. However, the board recognizes that the requirement of site control, as evidenced through a binding contract agreement, may be a barrier to entry. And the final draft of these rules and regulations includes language regarding site control that makes it clear a lease agreement or other binding agreement is not required to evidence site control. As you will hear, the board will accept as evidence of site control a letter signed by the landlord simply expressing an intent to actually enter into an agreement with the proposed licensee should they obtain licensure. Do any of the commissioners have any questions regarding the location requirement?
Just one for clarification. So if they have a binding contract with a space provider and we grant them a license, if they lose, if somehow that person decides now that that space is not available to them, but they have the license that we have granted them, what does that do? Do they have to start the process all over again because now they've lost their site?
That's a very good question. If site control is revoked, then they would have to start the process all over again.
Okay. Would they get any sort of consideration? Or is it like you just stop the whole thing all over again?
Because of the requirement by the CCC and Mass General Law of a butters hearing, it legally has to start again. I will say that if it's an incident where site control maybe a lease lapsed, I think that's something where we could work with the applicant. But if it's a situation where, or the licensee where the site control was actually revoked by whomever owns the property, then that's a private business transaction. At that point, the license would have to be revoked.
Okay.
And just to make it clear, they do not need a binding contract in any way to evidence site control. As long as it's a letter that says the landlord is essentially open to entering eventually into an agreement, that will be sufficient for the board's purposes. And it's our understanding that that is sufficient for the CCCs as well.
Okay, thank you.
Leslie, I just want to say, I think the revised language goes a long way to making it easier for these applicants to meet the conditions of site control. I think our first draft was more stringent, requiring a legal lease or deed. And what you just mentioned, just having in a letter of intent from the landlord, I think opens it up to more people that would otherwise perhaps be in a situation where if for some financial obligation that had nothing to do with the board that lapsed, they could still maintain their status as an active applicant. But that's, and I like that because I think that's a private transaction between the landlord and the tenant. And I don't think we want to get involved in that. But if the landlord wants to state that should an application be approved, this is their site, I think that goes enough to satisfy the requirements and some of the comments we had.
Do any of the other commissioners have any questions on the location requirement? The board also received correspondence regarding the timeline for the process. While the board cannot dictate the full timeline because obviously every applicant and every process is unique, the final draft of the rules and regulations require that the board hold a hearing within 30 days of a completed application, which is also defined in these rules and regulations, obviously notwithstanding the one-to-one equity to non-equity requirements. These draft rules and regulations also include requirements that a licensee pending before the CCC keep the board apprised of that process and that the board, and I will go into more detail on the specific language shortly, and that the board has the ability to call a hearing and potentially revoke a license if it determines after the hearing that a licensee is not pursuing CCC licensure in good faith. And this is to ensure that there is some control over someone who might have started the process, obtained a license, and might be sitting on it, and therefore not only tying up a license in a neighborhood, but also creating a buffer zone issue. Do any of the commissioners have any general questions? I'll get into the specific languages shortly. On the definition of an equity applicant. In defining equity applicant, the board sought to honor the specific intent of the ordinance, hence the definition contained herein. It's important to note that in addition to the priority given to equity applicants via the one-to-one ratio, certified equity applicants also have access to the equity fund and the associated technical support and resources which are managed by the Office of Economic Development. And that is why the board is interpreting and has defined equity applicant in terms of the ordinance is that every one of the individuals constituting 51% or more percent of ownership must hit at least three of the criteria outlined in the ordinance. I'll return to the specific language when we get into the actual rules and regulations themselves, but that was something that we received a number of requests for clarification on. Do any of the commissioners have any questions on the definition of equity applicant?
I don't have a question, but I do like the revised language. I think it's an improvement upon what we had in our original draft.
Commissioner Lambos?
Yeah, I would just say the same thing. I think that is the intent of the ordinance is to ensure that equity applicants are not, there's not like a hobbling together of the different percentage points. The intent is there, so I appreciate the clarification.
Any other questions right now? And to be clear, there will be the opportunity to return to any and all questions. The requirement of all direct and indirect beneficial interest holders being disclosed. The board did receive correspondence asking, comments asking that the board instead mirror the language at the CCC. However, the ordinance creating this board and this process specifically requires the Office of Economic Development to track information regarding applicants and licensees, including all the ownership individuals. It's also important for the board to know exactly who owns and operates these establishments, regardless of how small the beneficial interest may be. As such, we did not amend the draft language. I do also want to point out that as cannabis is mirrored very closely on liquor licensing regulations, that is the same for anyone applying for a liquor license. And also in the city of Boston, that is the same for anyone applying for a food-only license. There is a requirement that all beneficial interest holders are disclosed. Do any of the commissioners have questions on that point? So now I will turn to the specific changes to the draft rules and regulations. And these are the substantive changes. The board will define area of disproportionate impact in the same way as the Cannabis Control Commission does. And that is based on the very extensive process that the CCC underwent, including significant research and looking at census data. The board at this time did not, the board staff did not feel that there was a need to reinvent that language. It is important to note as well that the CCC has an online function which allows an interested party or any applicant to go online to determine whether they are in an area of disproportionate impact. We thought that clarity was important to maintain. Are there any questions on that point? Defining equity applicant. Again, the definition is that, the proposed definition is each individual constituting the 51% or more ownership interest must meet at least three of the criteria established in the ordinance. And again, this is based on the ordinance itself and what the board staff interpreted as the council's intent. Are there any questions on equity applicant? On the hearing schedule for disciplinary actions, we're proposing additional language regarding the notice process for disciplinary hearings and emergency disciplinary hearings in order to provide licensees and community members and other interested parties more clarity in what the process would be and to ensure that all of a licensee's due process rights are met. Are there any questions on the proposed language regarding disciplinary hearings? Section 1.02 on the application. There was previously language that stated that the board will not accept a partial application. There were a number of comments with concerns over that. And that language has been revised to state that the board will not hold a hearing on a partial application, but we will accept a partial application and work with the applicant to get to the point ideally of a completed application. Are there any questions on the complete versus partial application? On section 1.02, application requirements. The board staff has proposed language defining what constitutes a complete application, taking into consideration both complete applications with an equity component and no buffer zone, complete applications with no equity component and no buffer zone, complete applications with both an equity and a buffer zone issue. And this language was revised based on comments to ensure that there is clarity for all applicants. This section also addresses the process and timeline for requesting a letter of support, non-opposition or opposition from the district city councillor. And this is also the section that provides additional language on site control, including that a letter. I apologize, I'm scrolling down to this section. The request for a letter of support, non-opposition or opposition from a city councillor, which is pursuant to the ordinance required to complete an application. Upon notice that the applicant has requested a letter, the board will also send correspondence to the respective district city councillor stating that if, that they are requesting a letter and that if one has not been received within 45 days, that that will be considered non-opposition and a hearing will be scheduled. And of course, that respective district city council can clarify their position, either in writing or on the record at a hearing. And then in terms of site control, in order to evidence site control for the proposed license premise, the board will accept any one of the following. A deed if the applicant is the property owner, an executed lease agreement, or an executed letter from the property owner stating that it intends to enter into a lease agreement with the applicant for use of the cannabis establishment should the applicant obtain a license. This document must be notarized for the landlord's signature. And there's no requirement that the applicant has entered into any financial agreement with the property owner or that the applicant is currently paying rent. Commissioner Holmes?
Just on the executed letter of the property owner, is there going to be, like you said, is there going to be a timeline on that? Somebody could kind of hold on to something. So are we going to have a time that once they are licensed, that they have to move into this place?
I think that in terms of the final licensure, the non-use language and the three-month update speaks to that. And maybe one of the things when we get to that portion, we can build in language if you and the other commissioners are open to it stating that the update should include an update on the negotiations with the proposed landlord?
Yes, okay, thank you.
Commissioner, that can also be part of the host community agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions on completed application or the site control piece? In section 1.03, evaluation of new applications, the board staff struck the language requiring a minimum 50% score on criteria two through five. And the board is working with, the board staff is working with the commissioners to develop a score sheet which will be used based on the ordinance itself. And we'll be doing more work on that, but we have struck the minimum requirement in order, based on public comments and in order to ensure that the board has full discretion and these issues about minimum scores can be addressed on a case-by-case basis in their deliberations. Are there any questions on the minimum score? On the proposed buffer zone process in section 1.05, the board staff has removed the language regarding a letter of support from directive butters and a letter of support from either the district city councillor or the mayor's office of neighborhood services based on the multiple comments on that that would create a barrier to entry and also that wasn't previously required. The board notes that in order for an application to be heard within the half-mile buffer zone, some support must be evidenced, but there is no minimum number of support letters. And those could be from residents, they could be from organizations, they could be from the district city councillor or neighborhood services, but there is not a requirement. Do any of the commissioners have questions about the revision to the half-mile buffer zone? The board also struck language regarding the school buffer zone. While state law still confirms if there is a citywide ordinance adopted reducing the school buffer zone, the board regulations will not have conflicting language. Are there any questions from the commissioners regarding the school buffer zone?
I have one, more of a comment. I don't know if it's a question. How are we going to, or are we going to incorporate the fact that a lot of our neighborhoods use community centers as extensions of their schools for maybe after-school activities or outdoor activities? So are we, oh, are we able to include those in the school zone?
After, we spoke about this extensively with Corporation Counsel as well. And based on the statutory history of the revision at the state level, the language used to state that instead of, that the 500-foot buffer zone applied to any area in which children congregate. And the state purposely changed that in order to make it less restrictive. So after discussing it, well, it's not something that would be appropriate to build into the rules and regulations because it could be seen as the board being impracticable. And we, under state law, cannot, and that's the language they use, be unreasonable or impracticable with the restrictions that we, the additional restrictions that we place on this industry. And given the fact that we have a minimum number of licenses in Boston by law that have to be issued of 52, that could be construed as impracticable. And that being said, a large, significant role of this board and each commissioner is in determining whether the citing of a proposed license is appropriate. And so that can be a part of the discussion on the record.
Okay, thank you.
Leslie, I just want to say, Commissioner Holmes, I understand where you're coming from on that. I had to take a look at some of the legislative history to see how that definition changed, both in Massachusetts and in other states. And I wouldn't want something that we did here in Boston to actually be deemed unreasonable by the state into, you know, at the outset, burden our process. But I think we need to take, we need to let the process work itself out. And there is an opportunity for this to be changed, but that would have to be a citywide ordinance, whether that's expanded or limited. But right now, I think, I understand where you're coming from. We had a lot of comments on both sides of the issue with this. So I think what you see in the final rules and regulations reflects our grappling with that issue and trying to respect what the state law was on that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lambos?
I have one question going back real quick to the additional requirements on the buffer zone conflict. On the documentation of support, it says they may include letters. And then it says there is no minimum number of letters. I know that you added that language based on some of the questions that I had about that. So are they required to have letters or not required to have letters?
That's a very good question. The proposal is that they have to, as these rules and regulations exist now, is that they have to show some evidence of support, but there's no requirement that it be more than one letter.
So the minimum is one letter?
You are right. The minimum then would be one letter. You're absolutely.
So we should probably say that it's a, there is one letter minimum.
At least one letter. Thank you.
Yep.
Very good point. Do the commissioners have any other questions on this point? Section 2.03, annual renewal. We have included additional requirements to ensure compliance with the representations made to the board regarding the ordinance criteria. And we're, I think, currently in the process of looking at best practices in some other areas, both in cannabis, in other areas in the country, but also just in best practices in other just general areas. And one of the requirements with the annual renewal will be an attestation and summary provided by the licensee, which describes how it is in compliance with the ordinance and all the representations made to the board and each respective commissioner at the hearing. And that will touch on things such as the diversity and hiring and the safety and operation. So all the things that the board will be considering pursuant to the ordinance when it determines whether it grants a license or not, we will be asking for an update annually from the licensee itself to ensure that they're complying with what was represented. Are there any questions on that point?
Just a comment. I really do appreciate you addressing that issue around trying to figure out how we enforce some of the plans that applicants have said they would do and make sure that they follow through with them, especially on diversity and inclusion and employment plans from my perspective. I think oftentimes, there's a lot of promises that are made from businesses to communities, investment in, you know, hiring people of color or all of those things. And I do, and residents. And I really do think this helps, this language is helpful in that way. So I appreciate that.
Thank you. And we're, as I mentioned, we're still looking into what those plans should entail, but we think this is a good starting point. Any other questions from the commissioners on that point? Issuance of a license, which is section three. We were looking to provide some clarity. There's obviously a distinction between the granting of a license and the issuance of a license. Obviously, when a license is granted, it is the vote of this board and its discretionary function. And then they still have to go through the CCC process. And then if they are, if they do obtain licensure from the CCC, they then have to build out the space. So the issuance of a license does not require any additional hearings. It's strictly administrative. And what that will require is a final copy of their security and operations plan, certificate of occupancy, if they have a capacity of over 50, their fire assembly permit, a completed wage theft certification form, proof of insurance, and payment of the prorated annual wage staff certification form, proof of insurance, and payment of the prorated annual fee based on the date of opening, and that also is pursuant to the ordinance. We did receive one or two comments on the security and operations plan and concerns over whether or not that could be submitted to the board or whether it could be confidential. The security and operations plan, and we provide, now two establishments have opened in the city and we've provided each kind of form to work with to make sure that they address certain issues that are essentially of concern both to the board but up to the, to the neighbors and impact quality of life. This is not something where the board is looking for trade secrets. This is more, we want to know how you're going to be monitoring your capacity, how you're going to be monitoring your lines, how you're going to be IDing people coming to your establishment. So in no way is the information that the board is requesting going to compromise the actual security and operations at the site. It's more just to make sure that on the record, there is documentation so that if a licensee is not adhering to what they, what they agreed to do, that there, there can be a discussion. Do any of the commissioners have questions?
Leslie, this just came to mind. When we have these templates that you are saying that we could share with potential applicants for the safety, safety and operations plan, could we provide some examples of the types of training we would like them to include with their employees? I think there were some discussions about being able, being able to identify signs of intoxication or unruly patrons or customers, much along the same lines as a security or, or a person who works the door at a bar. I just think we should, we should ask them to include in that safety and operations plan the types of training they use with their staff.
And as we build out, that's a great point, and as we build out these kind of templates, which will be available on the website as opposed to being part of the rules and regulations, we can change them, you know, as we adapt, we will make sure that that is a piece of it and that those will be working documents.
Okay.
Any other questions on that piece? Section 3.07, and this is where the non-use language has been inserted, the proposed non-use language. And that states that any licensee granted a license by the board pending review by the CCC must submit a written status report regarding its application before the CCC every three months and annually upon submission of its annual renewal application. The board, in its discretion, may schedule any licensee pending review by the CCC for a non-use hearing and may revoke the license previously granted if the board finds that such licensee is not diligently, diligently pursuing approval in good faith. And to Commissioner Holmes's point, if the commissioners are comfortable, I will insert language stating that that will include an update on obtaining the legal right to occupy the space.
Please, yeah.
Are there any additional questions or comments on that point? Section five, causes for suspension or revocation of the license. One of the comments received actually from Councilor Edwards was that fraud or misrepresentation on the part of the applicant or licensee should be included in that language was inserted. Are there any questions on that addition? With that, I'm sure everyone is tired of hearing me talk for at least a minute, so I will turn it to, over to Chairwoman Joyce and then to the commissioners for any questions on any other portion of the, either the rules and regulations or the public comment.
Thank you, Leslie. And I just want to say a big thank you to you for all the work you've done with the, this draft and the drafts, the original draft, for getting us the comments each week, for researching the state law and the laws in some of the other states and municipalities. I really appreciate your attention to it. I think what we have before us today is a very clear, flexible, balanced set of rules and regulations. They're fair, and I think they do stay to the true intent of the original ordinance. And I think if we're able to vote on these today, this will give us a great set of rules and regulations so that we can start hearing at our next hearing in August, some applications for the board. I don't have any other comments or questions. I think you've, you've outlined it all for me today. You've answered every question that I, that I've had. But I do want to turn to the other commissioners to see if they have any additional comments or questions before I move for a vote.
I just have one. Should we put, or is there anything in here in the rules that allow us to amend this as we go along?
Yeah.
That's a very, very good point, Commissioner Holmes. There is language that has been added. It was initially, these may be extended time to time, and to receive comments that wasn't clear, who we said these may be amended pursuant to the requirements of Massachusetts general law.
Awesome.
Those requirements are very clearly laid out. There is a difference for an emergency regulation versus a non-emergency. So that, that's a great point, thank you. Commissioner Holmes, do you have any other questions or clarifications or comments?
No, not at this time.
Commissioner Lambos?
No questions, just comment again, I do appreciate the ability to be able to go back and forth and understand what changes needed to get made and what was state versus city laws. That's really helpful. I know that we're not going to be able to address everybody's concerns in public comment or even respond to them. I know that there's a lot of them. I just, I appreciated the explanations on my end, and, and I just wonder if other people have, who have submitted public comment, have questions. I'm sure, I don't want to put too much burden on you, Leslie, but I do think that it is important to have someone who's a resource, who has really researched and understands state versus city law, what needs to be amended by ordinance, what's in laws and regs. That was really helpful to me as a commissioner, and I'm sure people who are submitting public comments also, who, who may not have all of that background, could, if they were to need that explanation, I don't want to offer you up, but I am offering you up if they have any other questions.
That is what I'm here for.
Honestly, not to me.
Absolutely. If there's anyone who has any questions, they can always reach out to, to me, and I'm happy to talk through any of the legality. I have had more questions than I think we ever imagined throughout this process. It's been a learning experience for everyone. Commissioner Smith, do you have any questions or comments?
Actually, I was just gonna echo what Commissioner Holmes was asking about the amendment, and also to say thank you, Leslie, for the work. Thank you, Brandon, for that, thank you.
It hasn't just been me, it's been a big team, and lucky to have commissioners who actually are this invested and pay this much attention. So I think, I, I think we're setting a very clear and transparent process.
Yes, thank you.
Chairwoman Joyce?
Okay, with that, I make a motion to adopt these rules and regulations as they have been redrafted before us today.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that, that would constitute all of the commissioners. So now these rules and regulations have been adopted, they are enacted. There will be a, there will be some formatting things I need to do just to finalize the, some of the tweaks, and then within 24 hours, this will be posted to the board's website. We will also email out a copy to anyone who submitted comments. Thank you all, and I will turn it over to Chairwoman Joyce for closing remarks.
I just want to say thank you. I think this is, this is a very important process to get the rules and regulations correct, and it gives us some flexibility if we decide or if we determine as the process moves forward that we need more clarity or something doesn't work. And we're hopeful that at our next meeting, we'll have some applications before us to discuss and to evaluate. We'll be working with our team at the city, Attorney Taylor White and Attorney Alexis Kachuk, and we'll have more information about that by the end of next week.
Thank you all, and thank you to everyone who attended and who commented. We really appreciate your participation, and the rules and regulations are better for them. And with that, this concludes the hearing before the cannabis board. Thank you all.